Oh, it's okay. We can go ahead.
Well.
I got these last four points.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I forgot. This is Randy's.
I'm like.
Go ahead. I got them.
Okay, then we'll open up the committee, the whole meeting for March 14th at 7:37 PM. We'll start with firefighter wages, 2.11 January.
On the fire report for January, wages in the amount of $4,902.84. A decision is required to pay that. Attached is our.
Great. Okay, and so we'll move that forward then for resolution. All right, 2.12 February fire.
Same as February, sorry, February from the fire chief, amount of $3,109.21 for the month of February, and the outline is attached.
Okay, we'll move that forward to resolution as well. No discussion, I'm sure, on that. Very good.
I'll have a table.
Okay, now 3.1, planning district.
As you're aware, for the last several years, the Arm of Kelsey and the Town of the Paw have been in discussion somewhat about the possibilities of going and joining a joint planning district. The Arm of Kelsey has agreed to sit at the table, and I would appreciate a resolution, or I would request a resolution, to have planning branch come forward and assist us with our deliberations. I'm just letting you know, planning district, they've got a couple of pros in being part of a planning district. You get the ability to create and enforce a development plan for an entire district rather than separate entities. Zoning bylaws would go through a joint planning district for both parties, and they would also be responsible for building bylaws. So I see this as a positive way moving forward.
This is a huge positive, for sure.
And right now, all it would be is a resolution that we would go into discussion with the assistance of community planning.
And there's already a resolution then on file from the Arm of Kelsey? All right, so we received that as information, and we'll.
You'd pass a resolution requesting that.
Pass a resolution. Next council, okay, very good. 3.2, variation application.
This is basically a notice that we've received, and this is for rear-yard requirement of an upcoming meeting that'll be on the 29th of March. So this is just a heads-up that there's gonna be an applicant, or that the application has been submitted, and March 29th will be the public hearing.
Okay, any discussions on that?
Is that a contentious one?
Yes, this is.
This is the contentious one. So, and who was the other party involved in stuff last?
Barry, um, Barry, I mean Burns Anderson.
Burns Anderson.
Burns Anderson, right, and we did, did we not see a variation from one property owner already, and we approved it?
We, oh, yeah, that's right.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, I kinda forgot the details, but yeah.
I just wasn't, I didn't recognize.
We'll be right back on it on the 29th.
Yeah.
Okay, 3.3, conditional use application.
We also have an application from Swampy Creek Holdings as it relates to a request for conditional use, and this is also going to be a hearing on March 29th.
Is this one contentious?
Possibly.
I don't know, maybe.
Contentionally, no.
Yeah, I agree, much at all.
All right, item number four, 4.1, CDC.
Okay, Jim, this was actually your, I don't know if you wanna present it, or are you?
Well, just, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I'm, I'm suggesting and nominating the four remaining members of the existing Community Development Corporation. I'm also suggesting and nominating three people from, from the region, in Rob Penner, Kent Cook, and Murray Hokus. I have sent off a request to the RM for them to make an appointment. I've also sent off a request to the Chamber of Commerce asking them to make an appointment. And, pitter patter, let's get at her. Any other discussions?
Would you be requesting a resolution to appoint those ones that have already submitted?
I will, yeah.
And we'll wait to hear from the other two?
Right.
Okay.
I really see no point in putting this off for five more seconds. Anyway, yep.
Um, I have plopped or not plopped, put all those people that you've nominated in spots where they will actually fit.
Perfect.
Because some of them are town residents, some are.
Yep. Members at law.
Yeah, I fit them where they are, or put them where they all fit.
Yep, Brian?
I'm in favor of everything we wanna do, I'm just not sure why it is, why it's coming from council as opposed to coming from the CDC board as, as their recommendations going forward.
I have no answer for that, sorry. I, I went ahead and nominated these people. Well, I haven't nominated them yet, I put them in a, in a memo to, to council. As you know, this council, and previous council, did not have very good control over what was happening with the CDC. That comes to an end.
In the original, or in the service agreement, I mean, does it not say that the board has to be approved by town council?
I believe we're supposed to approve it.
Yeah, the board asked.
We have to.
Seven members, and she'll be approved by resolution of town council.
So it's gonna come back to this table?
Correct.
And I think that, ever since we talked about revamping the CDC, if you will, those were names that were already brought up as people who were willing to sit, so I don't know, I, I don't see a problem with it coming to this table if it's us that has to approve them.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, whatever, no, I just, 'cause it's just like when we get like appointments for like the museum and the library board, we just get, here's who we've appointed, here's the resolution that we need to pass, and I'm just wondering if this is the proper process.
Right in your agreement.
Hello, April, won't be long, it'll be May.
No, no, I don't.
The, the process that's outlined is identical. The, the difference is, is that we've recognized that we actually need to legitimately review and, and ponder whether or not the board members that are being presented are the ones that we want on the board. At the end of the day, it comes to us for, for resolution because we are to decide whether or not those that have been presented as potential directors for the board are, or for the, for the CDC board are the people that we want in that position. That's why it runs here.
Yeah.
So the fact that Jim has identified candidates at the outset, perhaps that's a little bit off of the mark on the process, but as an, as a starting point, I'm entirely fine with it. Once the board is up and functioning, and it identifies that our counselor representative will be the president of the board, then we know that, once that's established and our counselor's in there, that person will be putting forward nominated nominees for those positions that match up with our design criteria.
Just some questions for clarification. Has this council received and, and approved any kind of assigned document from the CDC with regard to being in favor of the agreement we asked them to approve?
That was in your report.
Yes.
And we, has it come up to council so we could approve it?
It's coming right.
Coming right after this one, it's in the same category. If you look on your agenda, it's item number.
Okay, so now, I didn't understand that that document was removing everybody from the board.
You're not, it's not removing anybody, you're adding.
You're expanding the board.
You're adding three people to the board.
Four people.
The existing ones that wanted to be on the board are still staying there. They're on that list that we're to be appointed, but we have to add more because it's seven to 11 members, so we're adding those extra members.
There's four that I'm recommending, other than the board members who are currently on the board, I'm, I'm looking at adding four more, including myself, and I have sent requests out to the Chamber of Commerce and to the Arm of Kelsey to make their appointments, and that will take our board to 10, 10 people.
Oh, okay, so, so this is in, this list is incomplete then, as well? I took this to be the.
No, I said here, I am awaiting response from the RM and from the chamber.
So on that point, it's incomplete, right? You don't have responses from two people, so therefore, but they are identified, or the rule.
Yeah, right, but there's nobody on, there was nobody on this list from council?
Yes, there's me.
It says right in your actual agreement, so that'll be included automatically on the list when you pass the resolution.
Okay, I didn't.
These are the outside members that were to be appointed, right?
Right, okay, so, so the thing says that, remind me, does it say?
Would it basically be is we will go through and we will actually make a list that says one town council representative?
Okay, it's a town council representative, as far as that the mayor, is what I'm wondering.
Town council representative.
Okay, so town council.
He's saying he wants to do it, right?
Okay, so that, that's all I was saying was, we know, we planned, but we need to put the, the name in there.
Okay. All right.
I was confused, thank you.
That's okay, that's okay. All right, item number four point, sorry.
So the next part of that is the actual service agreement?
Yes.
Which we're gonna be taking forward. This has been reviewed by council several times. They've signed off on it, so now we will need a resolution.
Technically signed off on it.
They haven't, you haven't received a copy.
I have not received a signed copy from them yet.
So let's get one, let's get a hold of them and get one.
Because they all did it through emails, they never actually signed it.
Or nobody came in and signed it.
It's probably signed in their office somewhere, I'd imagine.
So we're doing a resolution to sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's on the service agreement?
And lease agreement?
I got one issue on the lease agreement I'm wondering for.
Margaret had a comment.
Oh, sorry.
No, just to let you know that on the agenda for the.
Chamber of Commerce meeting, appointment to CDC board.
There you go.
There you go, just information.
Good, we're moving forward.
Hope you didn't want that one.
Okay, so, on the lease agreement, just one thing. I don't understand why, and I don't, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna spend any more than a minute on if we can help it, I don't understand why we would pay a dollar a year for rent and a $500 damage deposit.
Because if they damage our property, it's all our property. You're giving them the property to, to use as they see fit with a big monthly rent, but it is our equipment, our property in there. That was what any normal landlord would do, unless you wanna change it.
My question is, how is it different than every other asset we have, like the library or there? Right? Because when you go down to section four, the town covers everything. So we're, so we're giving it to someone for free and they got no responsibility whatsoever?
But the library, that's their equipment.
No, but I'm sorry, I'm jumping to the floor where it's, like, we're covering the insurance, we're covering.
They have to provide an insurance also, though.
They have to have content insurance and like liability insurance.
I know. I was just, I thought that here's your rent for a year, it's.
But it's all our.
Less than a penny a day.
Our this, or this, or that, so that's why we want the damage deposit. With, though, I believe it wouldn't hurt, we're looking, there was a couple of questions I had missed. In the past, the CDC independently ran their own board with little input from the Town of the Paw. The CDC was also responsible for the operation of the facilities, including rentals, with the exception of building maintenance. I'm actually looking for a council directive as it relates to the following things to proceed. The agreement with the CDC states that the CDC will foster social and economic development for the Town of the Paw. The current plan in place is the 2020 plan, which council has advised, has advised on different occasions, is not necessarily beneficial. I think there's times when we looked through that and said, there's certain things we wouldn't want. So is council gonna review the plan and provide a directive to the CDC?
I think originally what we talked about is that once we have the full CDC board up and running, that the CDC and town council would sit down and jointly come up with a economic development plan for the community that they would base their operations plan off of.
Okay, so that's the consensus you guys are moving forward?
That's what I thought we were.
It was in the, it was in the service agreement like that, it was a little bit wordier once upon a time, but.
But in the agreement, it specifically says, like, talking about this, the social and economic development for the town, that's where I got that from.
Yeah, yeah. I think there was like a little bit more to it, but in the course of the back and forth.
Can I get that right around, that everybody agrees with that, Crystal? Just 'cause I don't want someone coming back tomorrow and saying I didn't agree with that, so can we please ask that directive?
Is that okay with everybody?
But back to my section four thing, the lease store's on the hook for everything. That's odd, to me, that's odd. Lease store pays property taxes, lease store provides normal R and M for the building, provide leasing with building key, that's easy, I guess, insurance coverage, water, electricity, services and all utilities. So regardless of whether it's the CDC going in there, you should treat it like a lease, right? So some group's going in there, and you're saying, we're gonna pay for it, we're gonna charge a dollar, and we're gonna take all the responsibility away. That's not, to me, that's not good, so we need to fix that, right? The CDC is like every other organization, and they should have to pay utilities like it was a regular lease.
But.
I mean, you go out in triple net, they pay taxes, they pay everything, the only thing they pay, don't pay is the insurance on the outside.
Which is kind of the insurance that you'll be providing, because they'll have to.
That's not the, that's not what this says. This says, like, the town is on the hook for the whole building, and they're gonna use it, so let's say they have a big party one night, not that that's ever gonna happen, they break all the walls, they walk away, see ya.
But the way I understand it is the way that it was run when the CDC had it, it's the exact same service agreement that the CDC gave to any.
But that's not the point.
Can I finish?
Sure, but it's not right.
Okay, so the CDC had the same agreement with everybody that they rented offices out to in that building, it's the same agreement they have with everybody now. When they say that they'll pay insurance on the building, and it says, and the leased office spaces in such amount as the lesser shall deem appropriate, which means that they can go in there and they'll insure everything except for the office equipment and stuff, but actually, you would be silly not to insure the office equipment, 'cause the CDC is the one who owns all of that office equipment. So as an organization, we still had to pay content insurance if our computers and our phones and our cameras and all that other stuff got burnt in a fire, that would be covered under our insurance, not your insurance. And in most places that you lease spaces or rent spaces, all of the utilities are included in the rent that you already pay, so.
That's not correct.
All of that money.
So I can tell you that, 'cause I've done quite a few leases, that's, this is not how they're structured, right? So if we're gonna do this right, let's do it right. Like, so, I mean, it's a, it's an asset, we should treat it as an asset, it should be set up that way, it should be, like, it should be like every other lease you see.
I can tell you.
I cannot, I, I know you can tell me lots, but I mean, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, this is not correct. All the risk is on the town and not on the organization, whether it's the CDC or whoever's in there. So the place burns down, you're on the hook for everything.
Not on the.
Except for your, your photocopy, like, no, come on, like, it's gotta be set up properly. To me, this is not proper, and it'd be easy to fix.
Who, do we own the building that the library's in?
Yeah.
Do, do the library, did the library pay us a property tax?
Did they pay utilities?
They, they pay the property tax, but it, we give them the ground housing, they pay the property taxes, because that's part of their operations of their business, it comes from the funding they get.
And utilities? For everything. They pay everything?
Same with the museum.
But we give them a grant.
We give them the grant.
So why aren't we doing it the same way here?
I'm telling you, if you, you would need to readjust your lease prices then, because we have some of the most expensive leasing space in the town in that building, and I think if you decide to change things and not lower their monthly fee and start charging them for utilities and all that, you're gonna see a big turnaround, and that building is gonna end up costing us a lot of money, because everybody that's in it will move.
What do you, I don't get it, like, we're just changing the CDC's lease, right? Like, this, we would be changing.
We changed the price we're charging the tenants.
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying that if you're gonna start charging them for utilities and telling them, like, you're, you occupy one-sixth of this building, so you're gonna start paying one-sixth of the hydro because you're responsible for your own utilities, you're gonna start paying one-sixth of the water because you're responsible for your own utilities, that is going to increase the price to the people in that building unless you lower their rent. Because the way that I understand is that the reason that the rent is so expensive is because you don't have to worry about paying for any of those utilities or anything, just like if you were to rent an apartment or something, you would probably pay more in an apartment where all of your utilities are included than in an apartment where you have to pay your own utilities.
But your case there, you got a new building, right? So it doesn't, doesn't make sense. You got a brand-new building, your lease is gonna be more, buy a new apartment, like, it's gonna cost, if you're one, 10 years older, I build one today, it's not gonna be the same price, 'cause everything goes up, right?
Hey, so, from my point of view, this is not a core infrastructure asset, so if it is gonna cost us money, then it needs to go away. So if we're paying all the utilities, we don't even know what it costs us to own it, and we're leasing it out to organizations that are not ground within the town's core infrastructure or provision of services. This is a, a group more different than the museum or the library, the recycling center that we grant funding to, they need a space somewhere, they're having, they're willing to lend an asset, to lease an asset that we have. No businessperson would lease an asset that they own without knowing exactly what it's costing them and ensuring that the revenues generated by that lease at least cover the expenses associated with that building. So it's really a moot point for me, but whether or not the people that are in there right now will like the agreement or move or whatever, if it, if, if they all move and it becomes an asset that just simply cap, costs us money, because the cost of running it outpaces the revenue generation that it can provide, then we just sell it and be done. We don't, we're not a business, we're municipal government, we provide municipal services. So managing private assets as a municipal government just doesn't work, otherwise municipal governments would abound and flourish, and they don't, because we don't run good business, case in point. And Alan is an expert, in my opinion, on property management and leases and rental agreements and stuff, and if they've already seen this agreement and signed to it, then we should have come to the realization sooner than now that this is not the kind or style of lease that we should be doing. And it's probably a reflection of the fact that it's not an asset that we are used to handling. We are used to handling our own core assets, and this is not a core asset. It's a billing that came up on our agenda because it had been retrofitted at some point, it was a good deal to buy it, so we bought it. Now you have to treat it as a different kind of asset, and we're not in this lease, and we should. So I agree with Alan, this thing should be reworked, and if we're gonna start down the path with the CDC, it needs to be the right path. Don't sign this, start into our first meeting, the very first thing that happens in the first year is to go, oh, jeez, we gotta redo this lease entirely, and then you're focused on a civil lease agreement and not economic development.
So are we doing a new, are we redoing the leases with all the other people in the building?
Just with the city leases.
Yes, we do. Each group, and this is the lease, there's five or six of them, this is exactly the same lease.
We need to just sell the asset.
Maybe make a suggestion.
Hang on, let's hear Brian, then we'll hear from you, okay?
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with Alan and Andrew in terms of, we should run businesses like businesses. I am concerned, though, that we've already given CDC a lease agreement to sign, and this is what's included in it, so this part of the process is done for this year. We may not, I think it'd be foolish if we go back and say, oh, the one you said, we pushed you to sign last week, we don't really want, we made mistakes. Not where we wanna go, and two, I think it's beneficial to this group to, to support it in the first year and, and review it in our, in our upcoming budget as to how we deal with, with this kind of property, 'cause we kinda got caught where it was a special arrangement and they did provided service in lieu of, where now they don't do that. So, but I don't think, I think we would, wouldn't look very professional or business-like if we go back and say, oh, we wanna cancel that, that lease you just signed, that we asked you to sign. And I don't know how others feel, but, but would it be reasonable to, to revisit this in, in the upcoming budget for, for 2017 and make some corrections? 'Cause then we can have some discussion, and, and we've got people on the board that can, can voice the opinion of council on this matter.
I'm not opposed to it being on the radar for the, to this going forward, but with the understanding that it's a, a one-year lease, and, and that's because this is not a good agreement, it doesn't reflect adequately how business should be conducted and that, you know, it's gonna get revised, so that they're not taken aback by that at some point.
The other thing is, is if we really want them to pay, we just give them more money.
And I'm okay with that, because it forces an actual accounting goal of what that group is doing. We did the same thing with the recycle center, and we do the same thing with the museum and the library, right?
What is it?
We need to know what they cost to run, and if this is a facility that they use exclusively, then that's a fixed cost for them.
Okay, hang on.
Number one, the lease term shall be for indefinite term beginning whenever, and shall terminate if the service agreement between the Town of the Paw and the Paw Community Development Corporation ever becomes terminated, then this lease will automatically expire.
So, an indefinite period, so we can, we can define that for 12 months, right?
No.
No.
It's until your service agreement is done.
Until the CDC doesn't exist.
You guys have seen this lots and lots and lots of times, I sent it to all of you when we were trying to get them to sign it.
I don't think we need a lease, I really don't.
Can we maybe look at, let's maybe look at a way to, to fix this, I'm gonna be honest with you, we do not have the staff that is, is able to do the lease agreements and stuff like that. What would be the harm in asking them, look, we're giving you this kind of a rate, will you continue with, with the leases and looking after the payments with the leases on our behalf? And they just submit the money to us. I know it's not a pile of rent, but it's a pile of work that we would be doing here that we can't afford to be letting our staff do.
Which is exactly it.
Is that a problem?
Not for me, no.
We don't, they don't need a lease agreement, it's not like they're being kicked out of the building right now, like it's not the end of the world, it'll take a few months to hammer it out, we own the building.
Okay, so let's.
Can we please get that around the table, so everybody's on?
Yes, Randy, we can.
Yes.
Okay, this is what happens when we keep changing our minds, people.
Nobody's.
We do, we, look, how many years, we were now into an S on the back of year, we've been looking into this thing, it's just unbelievable.
Well, we're gonna sign the service agreement, it's just the lease agreement.
There's gonna be someone who's gonna say, we can't go forward till the paperwork's done, I just know that, and then it's gonna be June and July and August and September. So what are we gonna do here? Are we gonna keep this agreement and let it go forward the way it is, and we'll look at having a redone throughout the year, we'll get some expertise involved, and we'll move forward?
Question.
Open up, our CDC will operate, will rent to the, to the tenants, we will continue along, we'll move forward. I'm sorry, I just, I.
Stuck off indefinite term and put a year, and I'm fine with it.
On the signed lease agreement, what filled in the blank where it said indefinite term being blank? What was the date?
Beginning, it says beginning.
It says beginning.
And there is no date there, or at least it's.
It would be the date they signed it, that's what every agreement is, is the date you sign it. They've already signed the agreement that we sent them that said exactly this.
So there, somebody filled, but somebody filled in a date on this blank spot on the.
Probably on theirs, Brian, yes.
Because if that date was, you know, if that date was January 1, 2017, that would be a different issue than if it's.
Does anybody know what the date is on yours?
No, we don't have.
It would be their intention, so regardless, the day that they approved it, that would be their date. And if you really look at it, they've been there since the first.
Okay.
I'm saying maybe as something reasonable, we could nicely ask them if they would consider collecting the rent and looking after our agreement.
Okay, so we're going to move forward, but in the meantime, can we put a 90-day window on this to have a look at, at the, at how a lease should be done properly? And you can provide some help with that?
It'd be easy to change, right?
Ask. The 90 days shouldn't be a problem?
I don't know what you're, you're wanting, Jim, I, you know, you wanna move forward.
I'm not sure either. We're looking at you for some expertise.
Well, two minutes ago, you weren't, like, so far, I just said it puts the risk on the town, and that, that's not right, so.
So can we get one rewritten then? Can we get one rewritten and brought to council for their consideration of what it, what it should be? You can provide them a little guidance on that?
Yeah, if you want.
Let's do that.
Let's do it.
Can we get a copy of, of the signed documents? 'Cause right now, everything I've seen is, is unsigned, which is unofficial, which, 'cause I don't know, sometimes you go through, you're, you're signing a, a legal document, and you go in and you strike out something, and you initial it, and you change the document on the fly, and then you sign on the bottom, and that's your deal. I don't know what it is, so we should get this caught up and, we don't, we don't know.
True enough. I don't know if there is a signed copy. They took an email vote, I don't know if there necessarily is a signed copy anyway.
We'll get it figured out.
Are we talking about the lease between the town and the CDC? Are we talking about the lease between the CDC and the town? What are we talking about?
The town leases all the town.
The town and the CDC.
Please, please, one person only.
The town and the CDC lease.
That's the lease agreement we're talking about here. Okay, so let's get that worked out in the next 90 days, and in the meantime, we'll move forward with the appointments and get things going.
I have two other questions, I'm sorry, but they need to be answered. So what's our plan in the interim while the CDC is hiring a director? We do not have any authority to take over their responsibilities. So unfortunately, that's going to have to be on you guys as the newly appointed board.
To do what?
Any kind of business. We're getting constantly like letters, emails about stuff, so we do not have the authorities the town, your board does. So maybe once this board is appointed, we can start directing correspondence that way and you guys can look at how you're personally...
Absolutely, absolutely.
In this, we also talked about, and I just want to bring this up now, the Town of the Paw is also considered hiring a planner, and we're looking at a joint planning district. Are we duplicating the services like we asked the CDC to ensure they weren't? That's something to be aware of.
Okay, I thought the planner was further down in the...
It kind of is, but it affects here too. Because you have a, like, you have the CDC person, your planner replaced, the economic development person, now you're looking at a joint planning district. I'm just saying, we need to put that thought in everybody's head and start thinking moving forward what you want these people to be doing. That was just an idea to throw in there so that you give it some thought.
On that one too, I was thinking, do we need multiple people or do we need one person with multiple hats?
Well, I can see us having a great discussion about who's going to hire them, the Town or the CDC, we could probably spend three months deciding that.
That's why we said it, I thought that's why we put it their way, no disrespect.
No, none taken.
My misunderstanding, like, that's my question.
I'm just seeing ways that this thing just keeps going on and on and on and on.
So you can imagine the ways we see it, and I just want a clear directive, that's all I'm asking.
I have no idea, I have no idea who's going to do the hiring on this, or who's going to make the decision if we're going to have one person, two people, or three people? Is that going to be a discussion with the CDC? Is that going to be a council discussion? Who wants to weigh in on that?
Well, maybe, maybe it's going to come down to money. So that's a part time, two halves equals a whole.
What did we budget for 2016?
For the CDC, for the planning.
Yeah, planning? What was it, Jody, do you remember?
Forty. It was forty.
Um, I think it was forty.
Okay, what did we plan, what did we plan in the budget for 2016 for the Community Development Corporation?
Ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two.
So...
To me, the CDC, that's their business. They hire their person. We just want to make sure we're not duplicating, because we're telling them, don't duplicate. So all I'm doing is throwing the idea out there, saying, we've talked about a community planner, you've also got your CDC, whatever directive you're giving them, but I'm saying right now, when you're talking about your planner, you might want to hold off a little bit too, or give some thought of what you want them to do, because you're looking at a joint planning district. We've got a bunch of things on the...
But that would all roll in together, would it not?
That's my point, that's the discussion I'm asking you to start thinking about, because it's going to come up real quick and we're going to...
No, I don't care about the CDC, I'm talking about the planner. Like, if we were to have a planner, like, if we hired a planner, they would roll into the joint planning district, like, would that not coincide with something?
It's up to you guys, that's what I'm saying, give it some thought.
Okay.
Please, so that we're not doing repetitive of someone else, which is exactly what we told them not to.
Well, I'd rather us not pay for three positions for something we're not even doing at all right now.
So, just, the CDC then is going to expand its board, and they are going to probably, I would think, at their first meeting, discuss about hiring someone.
Yep.
Okay, and that's...
Their business.
Their business.
Okay.
That's one to hold off, Jim.
So we're doing a resolution...
I'm going to end up in the...
You pointed out the state by Friday.
And a service agreement.
It's true.
Okay, I just need clarification, sorry. I'm, we're doing a resolution to appoint the people, and a resolution pass signing the service agreement, but not the lease agreement.
Correct.
That's my understanding?
Sounds great.
That seems to be your plan. Well, Jim, it is your plan, I haven't heard the CDC...
Then what plan would you like to have, Brian, so that we can move forward with this Community Development Corporation? What plan would you like?
I would like to see, if the CDC has actually signed off on our arrangements, then the CDC has a meeting with the newly appointed thing. We should be concerned about appointing a member of council to this newly formed CDC. And that, and then that collective group adds to it accordingly and brings it forward to council, and council approves it.
Approves what?
Whoever, whatever names CDC brings forward.
But there's no CDC to bring names forward.
It's a distinct and separate board. It's not council, it's not an arm of council, it's established by council, and we have input into giving them direction.
Okay, so eight names, eight names, pardon, four names are coming...
Don't lose those names, but it's just a matter of when and how.
So four names are coming forward to be added to the four that are currently on the Board of Directors. Four names are coming forward, we're waiting on three others. And so, council will appoint those people, and then the CDC will then be able to meet and make decisions about moving forward. Does that work for you?
Well, I didn't know CDC was broke.
Broke?
Well, CDC's got four members now, and they're signing an agreement, and there's things in the agreement that affect a position from council, but the rest of the operation is still CDC's to make recommendation as to appointing new people and then ask council to approve it. That's, that's the process as I see it, that's what I'm concerned about.
So...
Okay, so, sorry, but I think, I think that there needs to be like a happy medium. I understand your urgency, this is something that you and Andrew have had on your plates for five years, and you're just like, I just want to see something happen and get some momentum going.
Well, it's about community growth, that's all.
I totally get that, and I think where Brian's coming from is that there's a little bit of a difference in the way that this normally occurs, because normally, we already have a fully functioning board like the museum or like the library, and that board has somebody who needs to be reappointed or needs to fill a spot, so they send a resolution to us. But I think the difference here is that those are fully functioning boards, and I think it's safe to say that, well, we do have somewhat of a CDC board, it's not a fully functional CDC board, so maybe what we could do is, as a council right now, we appoint Jim as our representative from council, because that's what we've been saying we're going to do all along, and Jim will become a member of the CDC. And then Jim and the other four current members of the CDC can sit down and say, hey, we have these people who would really like to join the board, and they can bring a motion or send a letter as the CDC board and say, these are the other four people that we would like to appoint to the board, and then that way, everybody's kind of happy, it doesn't need to be a long drawn-out process. Jim, you know, if you're appointed, then as a CDC board member, you can send that letter, and it can be on the agenda for the next committee meeting and be approved. I just think we're going to go a lot of back and forth, and I think you guys need to have a little ground.
It's their lease.
I'm fine with this, I'm fine with this, I'm fine with this.
So we're only appointing one board member?
So, okay, so at the next council meeting, you'll be appointing one member of council?
Yes.
And then that, then that, that person will then go and have a meeting with the... Got it, okay.
Unless maybe this, in the meantime, the four people from CDC do the email thing and send an email request as the CDC board even, saying we would like to appoint these people, I think that's where Brian's problem is, is that it's not, that directive isn't coming from the CDC board, it's coming from us, even though essentially we're...
They still exist.
I understand that.
All right.
Resolution for service agreement and appoint board member being Jim.
Yes.
Well, let's just say we're going to appoint someone from council, I think that wording is pretty important today.
Yeah, it's going to be you. Yes, yes. That's going to be the resolution.
I'm fine with that.
Everybody's fine with that, please?
I would like it to be Jim.
Thank you, okay, already, thank you. Did you nominate him?
I nominate Jim for the position of a board member, is it the president? Is everybody okay with it being Jim?
Yes.
Hands up. Hands up, if you're okay with it being Jim that we're putting forward.
So that we can put his name on a piece of paper and put it there, move it forward. All right.
Can we table this?
I'm really worried about your timing, so I want to get on to the next...
It doesn't matter that it's beyond the timing.
No, no, it's not, I want to get this...
No, it is, that's fine, that's fine.
No, it's painful.
It's over, we will continue.
Okay.
What?
I have other commitments, but these are some pretty important items.
Okay, well, I don't, can we deal with one that's critically important with you, and then we can, the rest are fine?
That's, that's okay, let's just continue, please.
4.2, library.
So, this is quite common, sometimes the larger grants that we give to community groups, they ask for an advance until they can get the budget passed, so I am recommending a resolution to permit them $40,000 in advance so they can pay their invoices. This is common practice.
Yep. Okay, do a resolution, 4.3, AMN.
Um, AMN resolutions, it's time to send them into the office by June 1st. I don't know if you have any ideas on your plate right now you're looking at. I say throw the resolution down there with the frontage levy, get it back on there because you have, this will be your northern district meeting, so you're also going to have Flynn Flynn that's going to be jumping on that.
Yep.
So that's one I would recommend, is there any other ones you can think of?
That's my big one. Are we looking for AMN support on Grace Lake?
That is to localize so it wouldn't fall under their...
Okay, I thought so, okay.
What about, sorry, I just remember last year Thompson had one about liquor, like liquor, Manitoba liquor and lotteries, and it was, I mean, it kind of more...
Giving more money.
It was like, yeah, like, how they say that they're mandated to give this much percentage to like programming, but to specify that more, so it's like, you know what I mean? So that kind of every community gets their fair share, like, so...
Let us look into that, because usually what happens is when it does hit the table, it stays on the table until it's dealt with.
Yes.
So we'll see if it's even still on there, yeah. Usually bring it up once, but I know this one wasn't, but we will definitely check into that.
Okay, 4.4, process of amending and repealing bylaws.
Um, this was a request for an issue sheet from Counselor Rock, I will let him take the floor.
Well, that was my concern with regard to how we amend some of our bylaws, and the specific one that we were talking about was the waste management system. And, my basic concern is, the way it's structured, when we have a bylaw that, well, first of all, when we refer to bylaws, we only refer to them by number. So when we have a bylaw and there's an existing bylaw and a new bylaw that both have the same name, both are waste management bylaws, when we're asked to approve this new bylaw and within that bylaw, at the tail end of it, it adds in, oh, and repeal bylaw, the previous bylaw, which is the one of the same name, there's no amendment going on there because when you approve one document and you repeal another, it's gone, the repealed one is gone, it no longer exists. And my problem is, is that repealed document is 95% the same as the one we just approved. So if you're asking me to approve a document, then you can't ask me to repeal its contents in another document and say it, you know, it doesn't matter. You have to either repeal the document, if you want to repeal one, just repeal it, and it's gone. And then if you want a new document, well, come up with a new one. But if you're trying to do it in one motion, you're challenging council with two different decisions, and to me, I realize, and I've been considering this for a long time, trying to figure out what's going on, and the problem is, is if we take it and we go through the first document, and we go to page one and we say, well, what do we want to change? Oh, nothing. What do we want to change? Oh, nothing. What do we want to change? So, then don't, don't at the end say, well, repeal the previous document which was exactly the same as the one I'm approving. The problem, the end result of it, and this is where we get into a real problem, I think, as councils, and we get a bit of a black eye, is because we do that, the end result is, is we don't indicate that really all we were doing was changing a few words within an existing bylaw. All we were doing was amending something within that existing bylaw. And if we do that as an amendment, then it would reflect in our minutes that that's the way we do it. If we took all those, all our bylaws and said right now, okay, the next time we're dealing with bylaws, we don't deal with the number, we deal with the title. So then we would have been saying, well, we're going to repeal the waste management bylaw and we're going to, or we're going to approve this waste management system bylaw, and then we're going to repeal the waste management system bylaw, because that's, the titles are the same. And it's only in these cases where we're actually simply doing simple amendments to a document. It's not where we're joining two old ones and creating a new one or something, or it's not like the taxi, the taxi one's a good one, it was new. And then, then when you go to amend it, well, you should look at it in terms of figuring out how to do the amendment.
Now, the taxi bylaw is not a new bylaw, it was called a livery bylaw before, and that bylaw was amended. And so, to me, I, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but we've had this discussion, I'm going to say, in the 15 months we've had at council, we've had this discussion probably 10 times, I think. So, when we see a bylaw and we have a discussion that perhaps we need to make some changes in that bylaw, it then comes to us for discussion, and the part that we're changing in the bylaw is highlighted in red, and the part that we're removing is stroked out, so you can see both the old and how the new part fits in. And at the end of the day, when we vote on a bylaw, not once, not twice, but three times, that bylaw becomes the only bylaw, not a portion of another bylaw, it becomes the only bylaw. In that case, it has to do with taxis, and the one you're using as an example is a bylaw on waste management. So every time it comes to us, we see the highlighted changes, and that's our discussion. If we're comfortable with the changes that have been brought forward by our administration and department heads, then we move it forward to council for its three votes. So I don't see, I don't see where having a bylaw that maybe get amended 15, 20 times, all of a sudden has turned into a 150-page document when it needs to be a three.
Actually, Jen has supporting documentation to prove exactly what happens when you don't get rid of old bylaws.
So you're talking about the waste management?
Yep.
So if somebody wanted to come in and have a copy of our waste management bylaw, if we didn't repeal bylaws, here's nine copies, that's what I would have to give to the public.
How confusing would that be?
Here's nine copies, you can figure it out.
Right, and I bet you every one of those copies is a new bylaw, right?
Every new, every bylaw has assigned a new number according to the act, yes.
So there's, none of those are amendments?
If we had, no. If we had done them all as amendments, I would have to give them all of the amendments, all nine amendments would have to go down.
And with today's technology, you don't have to necessarily know a bylaw number, you just have to know what it's about.
Yep, that's what we do.
If you go into bylaws and search them, you can come up, you can search any bylaw and it'll, it'll come up, it'll, the current bylaw will come up, not the former versions of it.
The numbers is an administrative...
If you came up, like, say something, say I came in tomorrow and I'm like, I'd like to look at the waste management bylaw, and you printed that, our current bylaw off.
Which would all, all I would have to give you.
Yeah.
All I would have to give you.
If I asked, I said, well, okay, I see this bylaw passed in 2016, or whatever.
Were there previous ones?
Were there previous ones?
And they have been listed there, of course you can.
You do, so, and then if I asked for that...
They remain on file forever.
So they're, exactly, so they're not gone. So if I ask for the previous documentation, you guys could provide that fairly easily.
Which is exactly why we say that the previous bylaw number, blah, 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 is repealed. Now, if that repealed another one, it keeps going in sync, it's repealed by this one, by this one, by this one. Part of this was I had to go through probably about 68 bylaws, 68, and I'm not exaggerating when I say that. And what I did, because no one would do the repealing, I had to go through all those bylaws, go through it each time, cut it out of a new bylaw, paste it onto the original so I knew what was going on. There were times where I had six paste marks over the same, over the same subject. We ended up with that many bylaws that could have easily been one of these. It is an administrative nightmare, number one, because when people do come in, we might as well say, here's confusion, have fun with that. This is more user-friendly, this is more of an administrative function for us, because it's more user-friendly for us to gather the information for Joe Citizen. Because we're not going to be here in 20, 30 years.
My fear is, Brian, is that you're not, you're not being able to articulate your concern. That's my, that's my feeling in all of this, because I just, you know, I just can't understand why you would want to have all relevant past bylaws dealing with taxis right back to the horse and buggy days. I just, it just, it just defies logic. When you just want the current one.
All I want is, is the current bylaw as the last amendment, period. That's not, see, when you, it's not a matter of just putting these paper on the archive file, what we're saying is, the words in this document, when we repeal the old one, we are saying those words are no longer relevant, they don't count anymore, they will be repealed.
So, yeah.
That, that doesn't, that's not just the document goes away, it's repealing them. So, but if at the same time in the same resolution or bylaw, you're saying, but we want all these in a different document because we're giving it a different number, and that's all we're changing is the number.
No, we're not changing just the number, you're making changes.
I know, and then you're not, you know, it, if, if when we come to council and we were saying, well, we're amending Article 9, Section B, and we'll delete cooled prior and replace it with prior cooled, that's an amendment. And that changes, and then...
You can't do an amendment. The process in the municipal act doesn't allow you to make even that change without assigning a new number to the bylaw. That's the, I think that's the element that you're missing here, Brian, you can't just change, if you change, if you want to change a period in the bylaw, it's an amendment, it requires a new number, and then it requires a process of three readings.
So it's not like we could have bylaw number one, like, and it would be like, our old bylaw number one?
No, you want to make a change, it's the next sequential number in the bylaws. That's, that's how it exists. It's impossible to change the location of those two words, from prior cooled to cooled prior, without doing an amendment, which triggers a new number, which triggers three readings. Which is why, and which is why Randy has said we need to start repealing the old ones when we trigger the new ones, because you otherwise end up with a stack of 12, which show every single last change all the way up through. But if the numbers, because it's not number 1, 2, 3, 4, it's number 1, then there's 71 bylaws that get passed that have nothing to do with that one, and you're at bylaw number 72. That's the next number you need, you want to amend number one, your next sequential number is 72. Now that's gotta be somewhere embedded in your document to lead you back to the first one. And it's just an administrative number, I remember when Randy was dealing with, because that was in our first term, it was a nightmare to try and understand even how she connected all those dots to clean this stuff up for us.
So now, in the waste management bylaw, it just refers to the previous repealed bylaw, correct? And then that...
Because there wouldn't be any one. If, if I'm gonna get rid of, say, if here's my new bylaw, but it affects two, say, say here's my original, we had an amendment to it that we didn't get rid of the old ones, so now there's two bylaws. I'm gonna do a new one, it's gonna get rid of both of those, but in my repealing, it's gonna say both bylaw numbers. That's where you will find some bylaws that has about four repeals.
I just want to add, if I might, that when we do make alterations to a bylaw, both at the committee of the whole level and at the council level as it proceeds through, we, I think we explain quite clearly and concisely why we're changing it, what we're changing it to, and the benefits for that change, and then that becomes a new bylaw that's brought forward to council for three weeks. Jen?
Section 147-2 of municipal act, the amendment or repeal of a bylaw is subject to the same requirements that apply to passing the bylaw, unless this or any other act expressly provides...
So it needs three readings, basically. It doesn't matter.
So it becomes a new bylaw?
Yeah. Doesn't matter what we do, we need three readings.
And, and, and all the evidence why the changes are made are presented and are a matter of record?
Okay, Article 42.5 says we can, we can refer to all our bylaws by title. We don't have to use a number. So I think it's, there are those that are saying, well, you have to use the numbers. It clearly says the title or an identifying number, or an identifying number. And I found it interesting that they chose to say the title first, because the title tells you what the bylaw is about. The number is a cataloging system which by its very nature is secretive. And we have the problem that then when you look at our minutes, we said, well, we're gonna approve bylaw number 4475 and we're gonna repeal bylaw number...
A bylaw of the town of the PA, about, and then you go on and talk about what the bylaw is about. You don't just say it's 4454, move along, 44. So someone who is, doesn't come to council, sitting over on, say, Tremont Avenue, say, well, I wonder what 4454 is? That's what your concern is, they don't know what it is. But we do say it's bylaw 4454, a bylaw in the town of the PA providing 4, and then you go enlist the service. The whereas and the therefore is in the points that go through the bylaw. It doesn't matter if it's a name or a number. For us, for our purposes here, for our filing purposes, for administrative purposes, it's a numbered system. The most current number is the most valid number and that's the way we operate. I just, you know, like, unless everybody else is prepared to change the way we do things, I think we just move along.
But I mean, Jim's right, right? So, for example, the accommodation tax bylaw was one of the last ones to come up and it says right here, bylaw number 4535, being a bylaw of the town of the PA to impose a tax on accommodation, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but every single time we bring up a bylaw by number, we follow it with being a bylaw of the PA and then explain exactly what the bylaw is.
And why we're bringing that bylaw forward?
Yes, yes.
And so, you know, I just...
Okay, I hear where you're coming from and all I would ask is, in the future, let's split those, that motion and let's have a motion to repeal and we'll have a motion to amend.
But it's the same motion.
Same bylaw.
We moved to, we knew...
Ah, same, no, it's two different, two different numbers.
No, it's not. We're providing this new bylaw because we're repealing the old one. All of us in favor.
You either repeal or amend, you can't do both.
You either amend or repeal.
It's an amendment or a repeal. That's the same vote, though.
Now, okay, so why are we not amending anything? Why are we...
We are, we make many amendments and then when we finish making those amendments, we repeal the bylaw and we replace it with the new one.
You amended the original, Brian. You've amended the original one. That's why you're making it. Either that or it's a brand new bylaw.
That's why, I just, I just feel like you're having a hard time articulating it because I just, I just...
I hate to say, but as an administrative request, I'm not prepared to go through 5,000 bylaws and make those changes. I would like to continue with the existing practice we have. And yes, Brian, I agree, it is much easier for administration. It is 100% easier, because we're the ones that present those bylaws to you as members of council and also to the public. So please, can I ask that at the table? Can we please put this to rest? I've dealt with this six times, I've involved the province in this. I don't know what to tell anybody at this table to change their mind, it's up to you, but this is the way I'm recommending we proceed because we've already got the practice in place and I don't want to change 5,000, or 5,000 bylaws when it's something even I'm not understanding.
And there's nine bylaws sitting on the table right now that need to be...
That have been sitting because of this coming up and now it's, it's now affecting our ability to do business. So can we please resolve this issue?
I, I have no issue with the way we're doing it. I have no issue.
Shall we ask a question?
Clearly it's not gonna change tonight, but I still, I still, it still begs the question you're asking two, one vote has to cover two separate issues and they are in conflict with each other. So, so you'll get it.
You can't vote on the first one if you don't repeal this.
Anyway, I don't want to talk about it anymore because I don't, I think enough's been said tonight.
Okay, I just don't want to come up in three months again.
Well, we'll probably come up in the next meeting if we have the same kind of a bylaw situation.
Okay, so, so...
So wait, again, happy medium. So could we repeal, I know, okay, a little bit more work, one more resolution, we have to vote one more time, so can, when we're doing it to appease Brian so that we're not doing two things in one, can we repeal the old bylaw and then do a separate resolution to...
You're gonna have to pretty much do two bylaws.
Yeah, no, no.
I just mean in the voting, I just mean in the voting.
Do you have a solid way of agreeing?
Okay, that's fine.
Chad, do you have a problem with how we're doing it?
No, I'm perfectly happy with it.
I'm happy with that existing system.
I think that's...
Sorry?
Like, you know, look at the tax incentive bylaw. It's clear, from, this is from a user point of view, right? From me coming in and asking these guys information time and time again. It's easy, it's concise, it doesn't waste my time. And if I want to go back and look at the other bylaws, it's just there and I can go look at that. So, back to their point, if they came in with a 20-page document, I wouldn't be happy with it. But here's one of those three. If I got questions about what it was before, and before that, I can go back and look and get them three pages before. So I don't understand why. To me, from a user point of view, this is perfect, right? And if it's easier for them and easier for the user, then what, I don't understand your issues.
All right.
I'm good with the way it is.
Andrew's good?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good.
You're good? Chad's good? Okay, that's the way it's gotta be.
Can we bring back the eight bylaws now?
Yeah, let's get them going.
Get ready, next council.
What do you mean the eight bylaws?
There's bylaws that we've got because of this.
We don't have bylaws coming forward because we needed to have this discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Not doing this twice.
No, that's good.
Okay, the PA Music and Fine Arts Festival.
We have no budget yet. We don't necessarily have money put away for these small funds. I think Jody might have put $1,000 undermining, but because we don't have a bylaw yet, we have to bring this to council to consider for a $90 sponsorship for the Music and Arts Festival.
Let's do it.
I know.
Move on.
Okay, so nine bucks, we're fine with that? Are we fine with that? Is anybody not fine with that?
I'm here, bud.
Yeah.
Payroll on accounts.
Resolution for general checks in the amount of $282,957.2 and payroll in the amount of $95,556. Some of the bigger ones you'll see in here is Autopac, RARs, Airport for Fuel, did a little bit of stockpiling of gravel again, so those are your, your larger price tags.
Okay, bring forward for resolution. 4.7, pledge of taxes.
Each year we apply for a line of credit. What this does through our bank is it allows us to borrow money in the shortfall in between and make our bill payments when we're applying for our taxes through the province. Usually it's about till July, August, when we start getting money come in. And we do this as a precaution. Apparently they'd missed 2015 because there were some staffing changes over there, so we're asking if we could do it for 2015 and 2016.
They said the same thing last year.
Yeah, I was like, I swear that they should be, and that we did, we did pass this last year.
Actually, this is the very first time I've ever seen these documents or these forms. I checked back and actually it was done in 2013, it wasn't done in 2014, and they're only asking me to do 2015 for a back form and 2016 for a new one.
I swear, I swear we passed this resolution.
As the deputy mayor and the mayor, I've only cited once.
Really? I've...
So it's to bring it forward for a resolution, please.
Doesn't matter at the end of the day.
And maybe, maybe we should put it in our calendar to remind them it's time for us to go to work.
Yeah. Do you guys want a million bucks or not?
Okay, 4.8, Kinsman Campground Building Tender. I can't wait.
As you can see, the bids came in and for the renovation, it was $85,000 and for the demolition, it was $75,000.
Too many tender, this place is crazy.
Well, and that's the only choice you have at this point? Yeah, that was the only tender we received. I talked to the guys today about dismantling on our own. We don't necessarily have the proper equipment for it. It's a cinder block building, you'd be jackhammering, you'd be doing a lot of this stuff. That could be part of why it came in a little higher.
That's stupid.
We're not capable of doing this, so recommendation is...
I've not paid $75,000 to tear that building down.
Unless the foundation is made out of titanium and is about eight feet thick, I don't think, see how this is, I'm just kidding. But no, it, we only had one bid, it's probably best to get it...
No one else is interested, you know?
We just have to do that internally. They have to find a way to do it.